Good late afternoon. Called board back into session. We apologize for a little bit of late start for the afternoon session, but we didn't get done with the morning session until 3:15. So with that, we'll go back in order and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a Quorm.
Okay, very good. We didn't have any items held over from the morning, so we'll go, I guess, first to our two o'clock item.
Okay. We, item 24, set salaries for the elected department heads, the assessor, district attorney, and sheriff for the 2019 through 2023 term of office.
Okay, Mr. Devine, I see Mr. Gil, do you make any comments?
I was going to have David.
Good afternoon, David Devine.
On the fly, very good.
With Personnel Services. Before you is a resolution that establishes a salary for the assessor, the district attorney, and the sheriff for the term beginning in 2019 and ending in 2023. We do this every four years, and the charter requires that we do this six months before the election, which takes place in June. So we have to have this action taken before December 31st. Like I said, it meets the charter requirements. State law also requires that this item is done in a public session, an untimed item, and the effective date of the adjustments won't take place until January 1 of 2019. That's my presentation. If you have any questions, please let me know.
David, just real quickly, so it talks about the monthly amounts. Why doesn't it give the annual salary? Why isn't that mentioned in the report?
I think historically, we have done it monthly, and...
That's okay, but there's no way.
We could change it to annual.
Somebody said, "What's the annual salary?" It doesn't say.
It never says annual.
It never does. I mean, that...
They always do everything by the month. It's the weirdest thing.
I will...
Maybe we can change it.
Four years out, we will absolutely change that.
I figured it out. You multiply it times 12.
Twelve, right. Yeah.
Right.
We've got a smart guy on the board.
At least we don't do it by pay period.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, Adam.
All right, it's been moved. Have a second. Chair would second it. I have no one signed up. Anybody on item 24? All right, seeing none, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Okay, next item.
Item 25 is the Natomas North Precinct Specific Plan Status Update Workshop.
Okay, Mr. Smith. You can raise that podium if you want, Todd.
Good afternoon, Chair, Board of Supervisors. I am not LeAnn Moffett. I am Todd Smith, Office of Planning and Environmental Review. Today's item is just a brief workshop, a status report essentially, on the Natomas North Precinct specific plan. Can we get the PowerPoint up? Thank you. You probably already know all of this, but for those paying attention at home or in the room, a little bit of regional context here. Starting in the south of this project area, we have the adjacent city of Sacramento and its ongoing development in the north Natomas Community Plan area, as well as the Greenbrier Project that's been fully entitled, that's to the southwest of the Natomas North Precinct, and the Panhandle, which is undergoing annexation by the city of Sacramento. Further to the west, we have Metro Air Park, which is a long-entitled project adjacent to, obviously, the Sacramento International Airport. Moving to the north, in Sutter County, we've got the Sutter Point Specific Plan area, and in Placer County, a large master plan area known as Placer Vineyards, and then back into Sacramento County, the Alberta Specific Plan area. So you can see the regional context here. The Natomas North Precinct is centrally located within both existing development and long-term planning development in other jurisdictions adjacent.
Todd, can I interrupt real quick?
Sure.
You mentioned what's west of the plan area, the north precinct plan area.
Yes.
As including Greenbrier, Metro Air Park, but there's also some other coloration on the map, which indicates the Secog blueprint designation that I think it's important to identify between Metro Air Park and the westerly edge of the north precinct boundary.
That is correct. So for background, this plan was initiated by the board in February 2012. We did environmental review initiation in March of 2016, and during that initiation in 2016, the board requested periodic status updates, and that's what today's exercise is about. Following that initiation, we did publish a notice of preparation for the EIR in April of last year. We held a couple of scoping meetings for that EIR with public agencies and private interests. We received a pretty substantial number of NOP comment letters, 28, and we have been engaged in ongoing outreach and technical discussions with a few of the technical service providers, including water resources, county's water resources, RD 1000, for example. And just to set the context again, this is the original land use plan that was initiated in April of 2016. You see here, I want to make note of the third bullet here, 700 acres of regional and neighborhood retail and entertainment uses. The next slide is the revised land use plan, and I'm pointing that out because of the reasons for this revision to the land use plan. One of the reasons is a market analysis that was done by the applicant to determine the real need for that large-scale regional retail and commercial. That, overall, that acreage has shrunk substantially, and the applicant has done kind of a refocusing effort on the urban design and circulation elements of this project, really intending to shift from a car-centric land use plan and circulation network to emphasize alternative modes such as bicycling and transit. I'll show you a later slide that deals with trails. The other thing here I want to emphasize is the increased number of acres of open space. It's increased by about 200 acres from the original plan. That has to do with some additional more detailed modeling that the applicant's done on hydrology and determining a 200-year floodplain elevation. And some of the redesign of the plan here is really turning that stormwater conveyance facility into an asset of the plan. So it's creating recreational armatures east and west within the plan, three distinct lines, if you will, that are shown in that light green color. The applicant has also heard from a number of constituents or interested parties regarding more active transportation, and so they've increased the numbers, the number of miles of trails and passeos within the plan. And there's also some more detail on the hospital medical campus that I'll get to in a minute. The next two slides are just simply comparisons of the old plan and the new plan, acreages and units. I'll pause here for a minute. So this slide denotes the regional commercial. You'll see a subtraction, 257 acres and change. That's what I mentioned earlier by that market analysis and that reduction of those land uses, and the increase in the floodplain up by 200 acres and change. One thing to note here on the roads acreage, you'll see that reduction, 115 acres. That has to do with what I mentioned about the rethinking the circulation pattern where the applicant is focusing on a circulation network internal to the project that is two-lane roadways, whether they're parkways or other collectors, rather than the traditional two-to-four-to-six-lane roadways. They're trying to emphasize a smaller roadway width to emphasize how people can get out of their cars, can walk, can bike, be more connected with the community. The only larger roads within the project are the east-west roadways, Alberta and El Corom Boulevard. This slide is the residential land use unit changes. So the big change here is the addition of an active adult component. This was not a component in the previous plan. This shows an increase of roughly 1,900 units. The other increases are primarily the high density and mixed use. Both of those are, of course, high density, and that total is about 1,000 units and change. Overall, the increase is just over 3,000 units. So this is the planned bike pad network. Like I mentioned earlier, the focus is on alternative modes. What you see here is the first draft of the plan, 50 miles of Class 1, that's off-street bike trails and pedestrian trails, 40 miles of Class 2, 15 miles of Class 4, that's also known as cycle track, where you have a lane, bicycle lane, that's separated by some vertical component of infrastructure, provide a safe route for bicyclists. And really, this network is designed to be a connection method for commuters, whether internal to the plan, going to a job destination within the plan, people who cycle for recreation, as well as safe routes to schools. So this also includes grade separations in potentially high conflict points with automobiles. For example, there's one that's planned down along El Corom Boulevard where it interfaces with the existing development in the city of Sacramento. There will be some ongoing evolution of this network as the plan evolves and as additional technical studies are completed. Transit, this slide represents the coverage area for the planned transit network that is ultimately planned for 15-minute headways during peak hours of full build-out. I'd like to point out the stat here, over 99% of the residential units are within a half-mile of the planned transit service. We have had some preliminary conversations with the applicant about the future of transit, and I'm not going to get into all that now, but as that, as technology is changing, transit service providers have to be adaptive to the future of transit. We're not sure exactly what that looks like yet, but we're hoping to have an adaptable transit service in this plan. So the health and hospitality mixed-use area, that was one of the key features of this plan when we came before you in 2016. The applicant has done some additional homework, and they have a representative here to speak on it, should you so desire. I want to point out one mistake on this slide, that acreage is actually 127 acres, not 150. That's my error. But the site has increased from what the original acreage was due to the physical plant needs associated with that facility, and I will defer to the applicant's representative on the further details of that. So today, really, it's just an opportunity for board members and any interested parties of the public to comment on this. As we're moving forward, we are going to proceed with issuance of a revised notice of preparation to make sure that all interested parties are aware of the changes to the project and they can be engaged throughout the process, the rest of the process, that is. I also want to mention that we will be with the applicant, continuing a pretty extensive outreach effort on the project. So far, we've got about a 10-page list of interested parties, whether they're federal, state, local agencies, other stakeholders like Block Sacramento, Sacramento-area bicycle advocates. I know we have meetings set up with the school districts, for example, Alberta Joint Elementary School District and Twin Rivers Unified School District. We hope to have a productive conversation with those service providers as well. We are targeting a mid-process workshop summer of next year, when we have more progress on various technical studies, then we can keep you informed. If there's any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them, but I also want to mention or remind you that the applicant's representative on the hospital medical campus is here as well.
Okay, thanks, Todd. Sure. Questions by board members, Mr. Smith? You're going to get a pretty easy this afternoon, I think, so... Did you indicate, though, that the applicant wanted to have their hospital representative speak? Is that what you said?
I did say that, yes.
Okay, all right. Well, then, if there's no questions of Todd, I'll invite the... Oh, Susan.
Yeah, thank you. Minor question. You were talking about the bicycle plan earlier. Between, I'm not sure who's in charge of whether it's planning or transportation, but when we plan bicycle lanes in the future, are we putting in the requirement to put the green marker lanes for bikes?
That's a good question. We haven't fully developed all that yet, but I think that it's important to make sure that whatever planned bicycle facilities are safe for those bicyclists, and if that's the green markings or the Class 4 type of facility with the vertical separation infrastructure, whatever's going to work to make sure the bicyclists are safe, that's what we want to do.
Okay, so we don't know what that's going to be on this project at this point in time?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. All right, nothing else, then, call forward the applicant. I don't know who's going to be here to make comments. Christine?
Yes.
Okay, Christine. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All the way from Texas?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. Where is Allen, Texas?
Just north of Dallas.
Okay, very good. You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm Christine Hammond. I am with CBRE Healthcare. We are a dedicated healthcare division of CBRE. I know everyone's probably familiar with the big green signs, and particularly focused on hospital planning. So I've been a hospital planner for 18 years and worked on multiple projects such as this, developing a greenfield site. I'm here today to talk about four basic things. One, why does this development include the health and hospitality mixed-use district? How this development will be phased over time? How each of the components that you see on the plan work with each other? And then how this is also a national trend in planned communities. In the spring of 2016, SG2 Consulting was engaged by OC Properties to do a market analysis of the area. For reference, SG2 is the healthcare industry's premier provider of market analysis. They have very detailed methodologies of looking at population, use rates, and multiple factors and disease trends in order to project the need for healthcare facilities in various markets. They defined a service area of multiple ZIP codes around the Natomas North Precinct area and looked at the demographics all the way out to 2050 to determine the need for additional healthcare within the market. By the year 2025, they have identified a need of an additional 150 hospital inpatient beds to support those ZIP codes. In addition, they're also projecting by 2025 that there will be a need for additional emergency room capacity to serve those various ZIP codes. And just for reference, to develop in the state of California a new hospital, it typically takes five to seven years from the time that you start planning it until that is opened. So 2025, it sounds far away, but it really isn't. So then, as we looked at this area and we started to plan, what does a hospital need to be on that site? Throughout the industry, if you're going to start a new hospital on a greenfield, they typically begin at about 60 beds for inpatient care. They're always phased, and in a new growing market, oftentimes, they will start even smaller with a physician practice and urgent care center, starting to get your physicians in place to support the community. Again, as you need the inpatient beds, the things such as emergency services, surgical services, and all of those come along with it. So as you build a hospital, you're obviously going to have medical office buildings to go along with it. So by the year 2025, you'd be starting the first phase of medical office and hospital care. We've planned this site for far greater than that. This is planned for up to 450 hospital beds, 250,000 square feet of medical office buildings. And again, this is a long-term phase organically as the population and the physicians come to this market. They are building block approaches, so as you add beds, you can add an additional medical office building. We've also planned smaller buildings for subacute facilities. So those would be things like a rehab hospital, a skilled nursing facility. So we're covering the continuum of care for the community. So whether it's having babies in the hospital to rehabilitation, all the way through the various levels of care for the community. Additionally, we have planned for specialty centers. So you may have a heart hospital, you may have a cancer center. So we've incorporated all of the things that go particularly within a hospital campus. Those are represented by the purple and the pink buildings on the plan that you see attached. Additionally, as a hospital grows and has more specialty services, you will see there is a hospitality center at the north part of the site. Those are for the hotels, for the families that are coming in to stay while their families are getting care. One thing I want to mention, the key component these days for a hospital is emergency room access. The emergency room is the front entry to a hospital. So having the access directly off of Alberta Road and off of Highway 99 would allow for visibility both to the hospital, but also increase visibility to the emergency room. That entrance off of Alberta has direct access, so that traffic is not mixing with the hotel or not mixing with the Lifestyle Center or the Residential. As you're coming to a hospital and you're coming to the emergency room, you want to see exactly where you're going and you want to get there quickly. So this plan has allowed for that. Within the Lifestyle Center, this is healthy lifestyle, healthy restaurants, gym components, things that will support the community, but will also support the healthcare entity on campus. Hospitals are often some of the largest employers around, so this would allow staff, patients, visitors to go eat, get off of the, get out of the hospital, and to go use all of those other amenities. The blue is potentially a residential, well, sorry, that's a potential civic village. It could be a library, it could be another amenity for the community. And lastly, at the southern part, you'll see the residential, the high-density residential area as well.
As long as you pause.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask you on the, I guess, the north side there, all the pink that is called Lifestyle Center, how many square feet is that?
Two hundred and eighty thousand square feet.
Seems like a lot.
I assume it'd be similar, George, I see you coming to the podium, but I assume it'd be similar to what we see maybe up in Eldorado Hills?
Eldorado Hills Town Center, correct. So there could be, we expect the hotel uses with the retail to interact with one another.
Okay, so it's meant for the residential area that's to the south, not just hospital-related uses?
Correct. Because one of the things that Todd mentioned in the reductions of commercial space, significant reduction in the overall acreage.
Right.
So this is, this retail is serving a dual purpose, to be an activity center both for the community and also for the hospital.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, the other important thing is developing communities in this manner focused on healthcare is becoming a national trend. Just two weeks ago, in Health Facilities Management, the University of Florida just announced a partnership with a developer just outside of Jacksonville, and it's known as Wildlight. And so the University of Florida and its academic arm has partnered with the developer, so they're going to also do a phased multi-year plan, and again, they're going to start with Urgent Care Ambulatory Surgery Center and physician clinics in that location. So as the community grows, the healthcare partner will be in place. And then additionally, outside of Houston, CHI St. Luke's, which is one of the larger healthcare providers in the Houston market, has partnered, their development is called Vivacity, and the bigger development is called Valley Ranch. It's in northeast Houston. And so as this development's getting underway, CHI, and it's also an academic institution, they are beginning to plan their healthcare communities as part of a much larger plan.
Are there any west coast examples? You've come from the east coast to middle part of the United States, but how about out this way?
I have not found any. This will be, you know, the first one.
This is the one you're going to be siding when you go do something next somewhere.
Yes, we'll do coast to coast. Okay? Questions?
Okay, any other questions, Christine?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the entire team, certainly our visitor from Texas today, who have heard. My interest and concern is loud and clear over now a few years about the importance of this particular component part of the plan area. And I say that as not just the supervisor that represents the area, but as a resident of Natomas, where unfortunately, we don't have a hospital system, we don't have access to a hospital north of the river. And it's not just Natomas, it's other communities, Alberta, and even points north of Sacramento County that just don't have that ease of access, don't have a choice. And God forbid we ever have any kind of emergency that affects the bridge access over the American River. It's fairly distressing to think that we have tens of thousands of people that would have a very, very difficult time accessing hospital care and emergency care. So I've asked this team at the onset of this application to really seriously consider showcasing a medical campus or hospital use for this entire plan area, which, you know, is in the thousands of acres. So this is very encouraging to see the level of seriousness that has been given to this and the resources that the property owners and the project team have applied to make sure that this is being thoughtfully planned and that this board is receiving the kind of information we are today about the intent to hopefully make this a reality at some point in the not-too-distant future.
Very good. Okay, thanks, Christine. Did have, unless there's any other presentations on behalf of the applicants. One speaker, another speaker is Pat Cavill? 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 I apologize if I mispronounced that, I was trying to, it was written very quickly, though, I could see.
Good afternoon, Honorable Supervisors. My name is Pat Kernan.
Oh, Kernan.
And I'm an attorney with Kingsley Bogart out of Folsom, and we represent both the Alberta School District as well as the Rio Linda Park District. I came here not intending to speak today, but unfortunately, Dr. Bogart, the superintendent from Alberta, and Mike Heller, who is now the new district... Heller, who is now the new district administrator for the Park District, were here to speak but had to leave.
Okay.
And I think it's much more powerful from district people than from a stupid attorney. So we're here, very quickly, I know you've had a long day. Both districts wholeheartedly support the project as amended, with the amended plan, and I just want to compliment the ownership team. I've done a lot of real estate projects in my life. With that projection to 2050, I'll only be 100 years old, but I've never been more impressed with a group of consultants and owners. They've been great. They've reached out all the time continuously. We look forward to working with them. They've involved us early in the process, which was what Dr. Borgard had asked a year and a half ago. They've been great. I cannot say enough good things. And also, I know the pocket parts are a critical component of the land use plan, and the Park District is supportive of that concept. Thank you very much.
That's great, Pat. Well, hopefully you're here at 100 years of age to see that. I'll be 96, so we'll see how that goes, so. All righty. I didn't have anybody else to speak. Anybody else wish to address the board? Anybody else from the team? Nope, you're all, okay. Todd, thanks so much. Any other closing comments for staff?
Just thank, thanks to you, Todd, and LeAnn abstention for all the, all the effort you put into this. I get very frequent updates on the, on the progress of the plan, and made it clear, not just as it relates to the medical campus, but, you know, whatever plan endeavor that we're going to pursue that involves this amount of acreage, certainly we all want to do carefully and look back at some point and be very proud of. So, so far, I really like what I see.
Very good. So let's be back to us, this was just a workshop today, be back to us midsummer 2018, next installment. All right, very good. Okay, that was just a receiving file, yes, review and comment. We did that, so. That concludes the agenda. If we have any appointments?
Yeah, we do have...
Any other, okay, very good.
So that would be item number 26. You are continuing to December 5th, the Assessment Appeals Board, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. For your matters today, we have the Carmichael Recreation and Park District, Supervisor Peters.
Continue to December 12th.
Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Mr. Natoli.
I don't have those nominations down here unless you have. I don't have.
If you're okay with it, I have some notes.
Well, go ahead, read them into the record.
Okay. The notes I have are the chiefs are recommending to continue to December 5th.
Okay, that's easy enough.
Sacramento County Youth Commission, Supervisor Serna.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Lauren Kim and waive the process, and then please continue the remainder to December 12th.
Okay, move to second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then we have the Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board. This would be Supervisor Peters.
Please continue to December 5th.
Okay, and then Supervisor Natoli.
Nominate Bill Cardoza.
Okay.
Did have that.
And that concludes your nominations.
Okay, that's clear the nominations. Account Executive, any comments or announcements?
Nope, not today.
Okay. Give me back on the 14th, will you?
I think so.
Okay, members of the board, anybody on the right, announcements, comments? Left? Okay, and I would just, I know that we need to adjourn necessarily, just note, though, that certainly our thoughts and prayers are with the families in the community of Southland Springs in Texas after tragic series of events there, so. And with that, then, thanks to everybody for their endurance today, and we'll be back in session, same place, different time, our same time, next Tuesday. With that, we'll be adjourned.